Let's open up the planning board meeting for May 5th, 2020. We are recording it. If anybody wishes to record, they just need to let me know. Also, to make sure that we have, to make sure that there's a proper record, we will announce the people who are, the planning board members, and planning department personnel who are attending. If you could just state your name so that there is a record of it, and Megan will keep track of who's here as well. So Michael Doherty is here.
Marcus.
We'll go in the same order that we usually do at the meeting. How about that?
Dave Suton is here.
Jessica Borin here.
And then we have Alan and Megan.
Yep, Megan Lakehead.
Okay. And so the one planning board member we're missing is Dave Sutton, looks like. Yeah, okay.
Hey Mike, just one thing. I think Doug mentioned the last time we had it before, you need to do a roll call vote on everything because it's audio, I guess. I think he said you need to roll call vote on everything that came up for me for a vote.
Yeah, and we can do that. We're doing sign recommendations, so we'll just, we'll do it as a roll call. All right, so let me just see here. Just trying to pull up the agenda here. Okay, so 7 o'clock, Town Planner's Report. Alan?
Okay, I don't know if you need to know all the nuances, but over the past few weeks since our last meeting, both Megan and I, Megan's been going in a couple hours during the week and relaying messages to me as well as picking up plans for me to review. A lot of what I've been doing, dealing with a lot of the realtors, you know, asking about parcels for sale. Also, we have some current houses and things under construction that I've had to review with Art in order for him to give out the permits. And a lot of inquiries about animals in an R20 zone, which is now, they have cows and things, and a lot is only a third of an acre. So Hart and I have been dealing with those on a daily basis. There's a lot of things that are in, are waiting to be voted on, and what I can do is I can just go through those roughly, because there may be some that you might feel comfortable about doing a Zoom meeting on, because they may not, they really don't affect a lot of people. It's just really affecting people that are on either side of them. One of those would be a tree cutting on Fred Jackson. Public Works and Randy Brown, they need to remove a tree in order to have the contractor install drainage. And it's one tree that's on Fred Jackson, and the thing is, it's not in front of any homes. It's totally isolated. But because it is a scenic highway, he's posted it, and he's verbally talked to the Butters, which are quite some ways away. So I don't know if that's something that the board may, so it's so small of a thing, and it really isn't affecting any parcels.
Is that the gentleman that had the house, any Torio shed dollars at the place?
No, this is on Fred Jackson Road. If you're coming off of 57, you'll go past the first set of drainage, and then the road really breaks up an awful lot. And I don't know if you know where Gene lives from planning, I mean from the conservation?
No.
It's in, there's no homes directly within a few hundred feet, and it's a road. It's in the town right away, and it needs to be removed because the drainage has failed. And they have a contractor that's going to excavate the road, put a new pipe in, but they have to make the pipe bigger, extend it more in the wing walls. And this tree would affect the installation of the wing walls and the edge of the pipe. Do I have a what? No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. Hey Dave.
So Dave Sutton now has joined us. Dave, how are you?
I can't hear anybody else.
Can't hear any?
We can hear you. Volume work on this thing.
Megan's the expert for me. She's been twittering me. Did you find it, Dave?
I can't hear nothing.
Touch the screen. Touch the screen and hit audio.
I figured it out.
Okay.
Do you hear us now?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Would you rather you didn't?
Oh, yes.
I knew that was coming, Mike. Hi guys, sorry about that. I was working on a job.
No problem.
All right.
One of my trucks is sitting out.
So normally on that tree cutting, you know, in the past, it's just gone by, but more recently, we had Montanary Road, we had another one on Fred Jackson Road, where because it's scenic, it had to go to a public hearing. Another one that's not, was it 797 College Highway? This is a gentleman that was a used car lot. They also can change it to vaping, and the vaping is not going very well. And now he wants to go back to used car sales. He did submit plans. Unfortunately, the plans were too big for me to try to fax and send to you. But the building is going to stay the same. All of the parking is going to be well back to 15 feet from the edge of the road, and it's all contained within the parcels. And he does show the proper widths and the lengths of the parking areas.
Is this a piece of Caution American Inn up in that area?
It's right, actually, you know, it used to be called the Cinderella gas station.
Yeah, right there.
It's right next to it. It used to be a used car sale, and then he went, he came in for a special permit to change to a vaping. Now he wants to go back to a used car sales, because vaping isn't very profitable. So that's, again, it would be, we do have a site plan from him. I helped assist him in preparing that. And so it's, in the priority of public hearings, it's low. Another one is on Hudson Drive. Every two years, gravel removal permits have to be renewed by the ongoing gravel. They have submitted their new bond, which is required. I've gone personally out there to make sure there's no additional, there's no structures, no screening, no violation. And it's up for renewal. The only thing that I would recommend is they're supposed to have two monitoring wells, and one of the wells was damaged. So I told, most of these are Leveque's plans, so I've told them, most likely, the planning board is going to want to have that well reinstalled and re-verified. Because what they do is they-
Didn't we deal with that last time, Alan?
They did. Unfortunately, they're making these big cuts. I don't think everyone's been out there. They're like 35 to 40 feet deep. And these excavators and things are so large, they damaged it. And so I had told them that we're going to need, we do have well readings, two of them, up until, we still have one that's been active, but I would recommend having that other one on the southwest side installed. So on each, all of these, something says Bill Crawford. Is somebody else?
Yeah, someone just joined.
I lost some. I lost, and there's a Bill Crawford. Another one, another one that I've been, Randy and I have been reviewing for quite some time, and they're on their fourth revision from Leveque, is number seven and number nine Lakeview, and also number 90 Point Grove Road. But that is, that's the Grove Restaurant. And behind the Grove Restaurant, there's going to be two, they came in, I want to say about five months ago, and they came in with an A&R, and they got approval for two lots by the planning board. Now, what they want to do is they want to build two houses behind the Grove. But because the combined two houses are disturbing more than an acre of land, they have to come in for a stormwater permit. And in this case, Randy, we've had them do additional test holes, because these two lots will, the westly side of the lake. And there's also floodplain involved. And so they've gone through, and they've addressed all of the outstanding items. They, one of the lots, you know, part of the A&R, they did a land swap with Cove Restaurant, which has been vacant for quite some time. And there's been some rumor that they're trying to sell it to get it back active as a restaurant. If I'm going too fast, just let me know. Another one that preceded even me working for the town is 108 through 112 Sunnyside Road, which is, if you just pass the ranch golf course on the north side. The gentleman's, he's had a large pile of dirt there for six or seven years. And there is one house built there, and it's really high in the air because of the groundwater table. And what they have to do is, again, because of the lots, there's three lots. One of them is an estate lot that was already approved eight years ago. And I told them that they got approval to create the lot. They still have to come in to talk to us about the particulars for the estate lot. You know, the length of driveway, burn offs for the emergency vehicles. But they're coming in jointly for the stormwater permit. All of these lots are depressed from the road, so the water always, the road actually comes down across these lots. So we, Randy and I, have been going over the particulars, not to disturb the flows, because there is a brook in the back. And again, all of these have been reviewed. The only one that has not been reviewed, which they have not applied for yet, is the estate lot.
Alan, is that tied in with the Grimaldis that used to lay on College Highway?
No, it's the Cooley Brothers.
Okay.
Cooley Brothers. If you're coming, if you're on Sunnyside and you're going towards Westfield, it's probably about 1,000 feet before the stop sign. There's a huge pile of dirt. That Cooley Construction was bringing that in, and they received the cease and desist. And the DEP, excuse me, had, they've just finally given them their orders, because they did work without, actually physically in the brook. But that's finally been cleared up. One bigger one, which was a fairly large package, is a Verizon cell tower. You know, they have to come in for a special permit, site plan approval. Off of Liberty Lane, it's just south of Lexington Circle. They've been working with us for about five years. And finally, they want to come in for a special hearing. This is one that just recently came in, but I did review it. I've been dealing with their attorney, Mr. Fenton, and I've talked briefly to Michael about it. And there were some discrepancies. They revised those. But the firm that they have doing it is really Class A, and it's nice to see a set of plans that are thoroughly done. The one thing that they, they said that they did a balloon test of March of this year, and I questioned them on that, because it was really done four years ago. He checked with his contractor, and they did do the balloon test. And I said, "Well, you didn't notify the town or any of the Butters." You know, the last time, letters were put in the newspaper, Butters were sent cards. It was difficult. There was only, out of the 20 places, there was only two areas that you could vaguely make out the balloon. And it was during the wintertime, too, which isn't right now. And new plans that they showed sort of reinforce what they did. But I said, the building, you know, the civilian inspector and I witnessed them the last time. This time, you know, Mr. Fenton, he apologized for not notifying anybody, and I said, "Well, most likely, we're going to have to do that again." Because, you know, people change residences and sell their homes. And it's just, cell towers are a touchy subject. And basically, yes.
Isn't this town property, what do you want to put that on? And if so, there has to be a public hearing on it?
Yes. All of the ones that I've been talking about are all public hearings. I would envision the Verizon's probably more, one of the more complicated ones. And then we still have, you know, we still have, we were talking about the solar bylaw revision. We were going to have, we had, Megan and I had already scheduled some of these meetings, notified the Butters. We were told we couldn't have the meetings, so we're going to have to do all of these. We would have to re-advertise, even if we're going to do a Zoom. Doug Mogul said we have to advertise our typical two times before the meeting, send out a Butters letters. And then the other one is the signed bylaw revisions, you know, which Melissa's sort of triggered. And lately, I've gone by there, and he has throttled down his sign a lot. I kind of said, you know, "You're trying to come in for something, you know, try to revise it and make it less of an eyesore." I don't know if anyone's been by there. I lost-
Go back to the solar. You sell copies of those, the first I gave you, where Three Face Power is in town?
Yep, I do. And actually, I shared that with the board. Maybe, I don't think you were there, Jim. And, you know, the one thing was saying, the gentleman was saying that there's not that much electrical available, and contrary to that, there's quite a bit of electrical free phase, you know, consumption. The thing is, is actually probably trying to get to it, you know, whomever, if we were to change it, which, again, that's the biggest thing, if we are going to change it or address it. But I think both bylaws and the Verizon, I think you would need more input than what you'd probably get from a Zoom meeting. That's just my opinion. I don't, and the last one, assigned revisions. Again, you know, that would have to go to a public hearing. I have, I've done some rough drafts. I've looked at some other towns. Some of the towns allow it on much smaller parcels. And I know when Doug Mogul and Mr. Diddy were on the board, you know, we did get a lot of input from residents, you know, primarily west of the College Highway. Am I going too fast, Megan?
No.
So that was one of the reasons, you know, there was, Harry was actually the chairperson on that. And so there was a lot of thought in it, you know, but, again, those, we were initially going to try to do those to get them on for the town meeting. The town meeting has been scheduled, and we wouldn't have time now to get those on, because we'd have to have, they are after six public hearings that were already scheduled. So the timed up, the time would not allow that. But, again, those, depends on how you feel. They might not be the most pressing. You know, and I think the board would like to have more input from that. And one of the questions I was going to have Doug, you know, like tonight, we're looking at these two signs, and if it gets voted, if they get voted on or not, how do we get people to sign it? Or are you going to allow me or one person to sign for the board? If everyone votes in favor of it, you know, it's just a matter of, I can notify, you know, Art, and, you know, allow them to proceed. There could be just something afterwards to sign. And I think any of these special hearings and special permits, some of them are pretty large, you know, they're 24 by 36 inch pieces, so it's something we can't really scan. So there's a little bit of a dilemma there, but, you know, we'll try to get through it. And that's what we have in queue. And what I did is I was sure to, as I came in, put these in order as a time delivered. There were some that were saying, "Well, can't I move it up?" And I said, "No, I cannot do that." And they understand that they had to ask the questions. You know, some of them are being represented by attorneys, and their attorneys are doing the dot, crossing their Ts and dotting their Is, which is fine. And that brings us up to, there's some other things that may be coming down. People, I think the select board right now are looking at if they can allow Airbnb's on the lakes. And I've been receiving calls where people, when they quote me, you know, underneath our home occupancy, we prohibit Airbnb's. And the biggest, one of the biggest things is we try to protect the environment, the people next door. And there's been some that have come up, and what happens is that they're typically, they've been younger people, they've come into the lakes to party, they've had bonfires till 2 o'clock, extra cars are coming in, you know, police have been called. And, you know, when you live in, when you live in, most of the houses around the lake are small, they're small lots, small houses. I just, more recently, I didn't know that this was brought up to the select board more recently. And, but so as it stands right now, the building official, which comes out of his jurisdiction, is saying that they are not allowed. Are there ones there? Of course, because there's always going to be people who don't follow the rules, or they've been giving away with it for a while. So I think we've been waiting, he's been waiting to get something from the town attorney regarding that. And some of the concerns are, these residences that are going to be rented out have to have handicap accessibility, proper fire inspections, firewalls. There's, and of course, parking is a big thing, you know. I know there was some problem where there was a party, they had 15 cars in this little road. The people I was going to mention for them, and they said they were going to be zoomed on, but I guess they didn't, they decided not to do that. And they had a real problem, and Art issued them, or issued the people who were selling it, are renting it, a cease and desist, and that's the way it's been standing. But I guess it's starting to raise its head again. Of course, the summer season's coming. You know, people are trying to make money, and the thing is, these aren't owner occupied. You know, if they were owner occupied, the owner would be responsible for regulating, you know, what goes on, hopefully. These are not owner operated, and, you know, people are coming to the lakes to party and enjoy the water, boating, and recreation. So it's something to put in the pocket.
What's the feedback from the Board of Select, anything?
Well, there was a gentleman who went to the Board of Select, and it was a residence that had been cut and ceased and desisted on White Street, and the people were required to not rent it out short term. And is Doug on this still?
Yes, yeah.
Marcus, have you been to any of the meetings with the select board when they talked about the short term rental?
Yeah, I know it's gone back and forth. It's actually more in front of, sorry, Arthur. But this is really an issue that, it came up again, because, Mr. Chairman, is it okay to explain?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
The, there was a complaint last year, and under the interpretation of our existing zoning by the zoning enforcement officer, Airbnb's are not allowed. There was some state legislation filed regarding registration and fees and inspections and stuff like that. At the state level, the particular property that was listed on Airbnb had not complied with any of that. They got a cease and desist. Honestly, the town shot themselves a little bit in the foot here. It was rented again recently, under, from, and it was actually rented by the contractor who was doing the alum treatment for the town.
Notice how I was very quick. I wanted to make sure you were there.
We'll take the hit, right? I mean, no one knew that, you know, we hired the contractor. The contractor found a place to dock their boat and have the guy stay during the week while he's doing the thing. We didn't know until we got a complaint from the same person who complained last time. So it's back with the lawyer. They're done treating the lake, I think, tomorrow. So this short term issue is over, and it's back with the attorney to go back to this property owner in particular. But the board may want to take a look at, in the future, you know, the short term rental situation in light of the state law that came in last year, and, you know, the ramifications for zoning. The current interpretation in town is that it's specifically not allowed, because it's not specifically allowed under zoning today. So that's up to the board to decide how to handle that in the future.
Have you been, Doug, have you listened to everything so far from the very beginning?
Yes.
Okay, have I messed up any way? How?
Alan, you're doing a fantastic job, just so you know.
No, no, but the plans, how do, you know, typically, we have to have any plans signed and stamped by the board.
Yeah, I meant to reach out to Michelle and Carl, because Dennis Clark actually presented to the Conservation Commission last night, I believe it was. They actually adopted, in a meeting, basically adopted something that they could adopt that would allow for them to e-certify everything. He's not intending to use it right now. What he's done so far is, if they needed something signed, he actually literally went around to the minimum number of required places and dropped the document off with a fresh pen and had somebody sign it, you know, a proper wet signature. So.
And we've done something that's similar in the past, where the-
Right. So that's kind of worked for them so far.
Is there not an order on that?
I don't know the answer to that. I honestly don't know. I'd have to check with town council, actually, to see. I know Dennis might have more information. I think that had to do with stuff that had to be filed with the registry, that they were actually taking electronic signatures. And basically, you vote, if you have a vote, it allows the, either the, I don't know if it's the town planner, but it certainly allowed the conservation coordinator to sign to say that a proper vote was taken during a meeting, and I'm applying the signature here, you know, recognizing that vote, rather than having everybody apply a wet signature to the documents themselves.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I know there's one, there's an order out there from the Supreme Judicial Court for attorneys and judges and clerks, and we can all electronically sign everything.
I just don't know- I don't know if that applies to the planning board or conservation or any other governmental stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, that one wouldn't, but there may be one from the Commonwealth.
It might be a state order, too, yeah, a governor's order or something like that, too. I don't know. But I did see the Supreme Judicial Court one, but, so I don't want to answer that one without giving you all the possibly bad advice.
Going back to short term rentals, there's quite a few examples out there, communities that have bylaws on that. And I think at one time, I sent something to Alan regarding that to see if we might get out ahead of it. Have been some in town.
Right, we have had some preliminary meetings when Tom Fitzgerald was still on board. And Art and Tom Fitzgerald, the Police Department, the Fire Department, they all kind of toned in. And because of the small homes, some of these are dead roads, they wanted, they weren't in favor of it, and if it did happen, the attorney from the town was saying, "We could be more restrictive than the state and some of the other towns." And some of the other ones I looked at, the parcels were not as small as what we have around our three lakes. And the people that are there don't want next door neighbors that are noisy. And, you know, everyone has mutual feelings with their neighbors, and they, they're, since I've been here, there's probably been a half a dozen problems because of the lack of people being polite to the people who are there. But it's something that's, it's in the hands of the attorneys, and let them handle that. But they, he did receive some information from the town. And that's why Art stayed with the, it was going to, he basically is saying it's not allowed because in our zoning it under human, uh, home occupancy, it states that. And we're, we're, we're to protect the people who live there.
One thing to keep in mind too is that, you know, my memory, I think in the across Massachusetts, not just like the Cape, but it, you're allowed to tax those rentals.
Well, the state.
No, 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 you're allowed to do it locally as well. You get this, both the state with, you know, 5.7% is from the state, but locally, that could be something that is decided to be done too.
Right. And there can be fees for inspections, you know, that go to the, um, to the town or fire police and all of those. But it's just, again, that's something we've got quite a bit to do before we get to, um, to that one. And that's basically about it, you know, uh, Megan's picking up, she's going in a couple hours a week. She's giving me people to call. People are calling me, they're calling the front office. So it's been, you know, a couple hours worth of work each day, which is good. Gets me out of my wife's hair. And I, um, I do go out, drive. I'm not allowed to be around people, but it's good too. Anyway, I'm incognito. So I would say 90% of the people haven't called back, which is good. So now we're back, now we're on to the two signs. And Megan, Megan, I think faxed the signs to everybody. And unfortunately, in the faxing, they don't come out colored. So between Megan and I, I can verbally describe the signs because I do have them on my phone. And Megan has it on her. She has the actual colored original. So if you, if you, if you want to go through each one, I can explain it to you. The biggest thing is the building official has looked at it, you know, I have looked at it also. Uh, they do fall below what the required signage. None of them are electronic variable. One is a, um, a fixed wall sign. So I don't know what, what, what the order is that you want me to go add, Michael.
Um, hold on, I'm just trying to see if I can share.
Megan, did anybody else get those copies, do you know?
Um, I sent them to you and Michael.
Yeah, and I screwed up. I meant to send them around to everybody.
I have, like, the first one on the agenda is 81 Point Grove. I have it with me. I don't know if that helps anybody to see it.
Right, what, what it is, this is at.
This is the color.
This is at the, um, right at Congamont, Congamont, it's a Legends, it's below the Legends. It was a Pizza Parley before. Congamont Pizza has moved in, in the bottom area. They have ground access to a large parking lot. And they're, they're allowed 50 square feet and their sign is a 30 square foot. And I don't know, can you guys see Megan's picture?
I got the email from Michael.
Yeah, let me, and let me see, I just sent the email because it just didn't, I, I don't know what happened. It didn't go. But let me just, give me one second, see if I can share my screen right here with it on there. What do we do? We're doing 81 Point Grove, is that what?
81, yeah.
Yeah.
I was there on Sunday. It was delicious.
Excuse me?
I picked it up from there on Sunday. It was delicious.
Oh, you did? I guess, part of their business is a pizza place, pizza grinders. But then they're also having smoked meats, which they had over on Congamont Road. It's just, it was too small over in Congamont Road. And they, um, they went here, of course, for more exposure.
Alan, did you say this is a wall sign?
A wall sign, yes.
You guys want me to read the order? Want me to read what it says, Alan?
Yes.
So it says, "The applicant has requested to install a wall sign consisting of a rectangular externally illuminated sign. The square footage requested is 30 square feet. Per town code 185, attachment 63, table 3, business and industrial zones fronting on streets other than College Highway, the applicant is allowed 50 square feet or 10% of the facade. The sign is 20 square feet less than the 50 square foot maximum allowed. The building department supports this application. And this is submitted by Arthur Lawler, who's our building inspector."
Right, does everybody, does everybody have access to the picture?
Nope. And I just, are you, are you able to see my screen?
I can, I can see, I can see the picture. Oh, what I, what I, does everybody see it?
Yeah, where it says Congamont Pizza, it's in red.
Yeah.
I think it's the same coloring that's on the building now.
Yes.
For his old sign.
Looking at the sign on the left-hand side where it shows the pizza itself, the major background is red and the letters are yellow and the pizza pie is yellow. Right-hand side of the sign is, it's a black background. And the, uh, there's a, there's a pig on it and it's Kraft Meat and Smokehouse. Those are white letters. So I don't think, personally, I don't think it's, it's a objectionable, it's not ugly, it's not flamingo pink. And it's, there was a, there was a sign there and it was a log, it was cut. And the gentleman had carved it in. When he left, he took the sign with him. So can people, can people see the, the sign?
Nope, I can see it.
The letters are white, you know, the Congamont Pizza are white, the Kraft Meat and Smokehouse is white.
This is down, this is down by the business.
Excuse me?
It's over the entrance to the business?
Yes, it is. And it was actually, there's actually like an overhang on the upper part of the business too.
Here, I can, I mean, for what it's worth, I can share the application, Marcus. So that's on there so you can have a sense of.
So this is a wall sign instead of a roof sign.
Correct.
Is this, I don't know, I'm going to try to get this, this is what we have on our GIS. See where the red and green is, Marcus? Kind of right there. This is the lower level of the parking lot that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I see that.
Their business is on the ground level. And the, um, the other restaurant is, is above that.
Right.
Okay. Um, any, I, I'm assuming you would have said something, Alan, if there was any issues with measurements or anything else. There's no, it applies with all the requirements for the zone.
Yeah, it does. And, and I, and I stressed when you, when I got wind of, he was in the process, I, you know, I told him a few months ago, was, you know, try to get it in. I told him about our meetings and unfortunately it came in after our last meeting. And, um, so, and then I had, I always have Art look at it first. Then I look at it and I'm normally saying, oh, I need color copies, you know, because I was bored to, to see what's there. But when you do fax it, we lose all of that, that attributes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just going forward, I, I guess, and we can talk about this later, but is there a way to scan stuff in in color at the, at Town Hall or elsewhere?
I'm not sure, Doug, do you know that question? He might not be there anymore.
I'm here. Uh, yeah, there is. I think in the select board office, they have a color scanner.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good to know. I, I know we don't, you know, I checked into the building department and, and us. And, um, again, you know, it's Megan, her system's not up and running. She's having to use her home and as well as mine. Now, Jim Milton is supposed to hook her up and get her going correctly. So it's, um, I'm making, you know, next time Megan comes in, she has to come in for, to do payroll this week so I can have her check with whoever's in.
Okay.
Color, color is very helpful.
Right, especially for things like this.
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or Megan could probably show you or, Michael, yours came through black and white also, right?
Correct, that's what was scanned in, yeah. Emailed over, so. Um, all right, any questions from board members?
Oh.
Any questions from town officials? Any questions or comments from, uh, the, uh, town members?
Sorry, Mike, just when you guys do a sign by law, I mean, the, the contents of the sign are irrelevant. So whether it's in color or black and white or, or anything, it's only a dimensional sign permit anyway. Because we don't regulate the content of a sign anyhow. For the purpose of the drawing, if someone submitted a black and white drawing and said it's going to be orange and purple, it's not something you can regulate anyway under the, under the sign by law. It's just, does the sign allowed within the, the, the size of the building? As a percentage, right?
Yes, it's, it's a minimum square footage of 50 square feet. And then it's 10% or if it's a large building, it's 10% of the total square footage on the facade. So he falls below the 50 square feet.
I mean, I, Doug, I, I guess I just.
Okay, I'm not hearing anybody anymore.
In that I think the sign by law incorporates the design guidelines. Um, so there, you know, you can, there's a little bit of wiggle room. You obviously wouldn't do it by content necessarily. But, um, design or, you know, colors may, you know, you arguably could, uh, do something about that, I think. But, you know, it, it, most people are pretty reasonable about it. It doesn't usually come up, so.
Correct. It's just more of a, I, I remember when we, when I first started 1,000 years ago, it was a First Amendment issue as far as when they, there was, there was actually a bylaw subcommittee and they said all the signs in town have to be green, like Sims Berry tried to do. Um, and under, the lawyer said, yeah, no, you can't do that. It's a first, actually a straight-up First Amendment issue.
Our, our friend at Pride Gas Stations tried to do that same thing.
Ah, yeah, I'm familiar with him too.
Oh, Bob.
But he, he did what we wanted him to.
Well, that was because it was in his plan and he submitted it as a plan and then he did it differently. But this is, you know, you've got an application in front of you. As long as they build what they say they're going to build, right? Anyway, I don't mean to tie you guys up with.
That's okay.
Minor details.
Um, okay, so, um, well, because of the format here, we'll do this sort of as a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion here. Okay?
Yep.
Marcus Phelps, Marcus Phelps, I make a mo- a motion for a.
Thank you.
Recommendation on the sign located at 81 Point Grove Road.
I'll second the motion. Richard Ossinger.
Okay, uh, so, uh, Michael Dougherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Ossinger, I.
Dave Spina, I.
You gotta unmute Sutton.
Nope, I thought I did. Dave Spina, I.
Did you vote, Dave Sutton?
Yeah, I did. I said I. Oh, you muted me, huh?
No, well. I do have that ability, but, okay, um, all right. So that's 81. What's the next one? The next one is.
Oh, I, I, should I then get something to Art saying we approached it? And.
Yeah, I think just. Yeah, just do it by, by, you know, email memo type thing and just send him an email that basically says that there was a positive recommendation made at, you know, this meeting of the planning board. Um, all right, so let me see if I can pull up. All right, uh, 18 Klaus Anderson. All right.
Just to give you an idea, 18 Klaus Anderson is, if you, if you come in off of College Highway onto Klaus Anderson, and I don't know if anyone knows where Mr. Jacquesier used to have a big barn in a building. And he built it behind that. So the new owners, uh, they have, they produce beeskeeping and raw honey. And they, right now, they do have a little metal sign up there around two different, if it was one eye and see it. And what they like to do is put up an official freestanding sign. And again, the sign, Megan can kind of show you what it looks like, the colors.
Yeah.
So basically the, the bulk of it is white. The corners are like a honeycomb yellow. And the bee in the, in the middle of it is yellow. And it's hugging the state of Maine, Massachusetts and Vermont. So I think the, they're associated. And, um, they're just trying to be hugging these states, trying to, um, and, and again, Megan could probably read Art's memo.
Yeah, I can put it up.
Where it put freestanding. Go ahead, Meg.
Yep, it says the owner William Crawford.
I'm sharing it as well, but if you could read it, just for people who can't see it.
The owner William Crawford has submitted a sign application for a freestanding sign at the above referenced address. Um, the applicant has requested to erect a non-illuminated freestanding sign. The square footage is 24.7 square feet. Per town code 185, attachment 62, table 2, agricultural and recreational use, applicant is allowed 25 square feet. The sign is 0.3 square feet less than the 25 square feet allowed. The building department supports this application. And this is the color.
It's fine to me.
And it's an appropriate, you know, um, it's not eye-darring or offensive in any way.
It's beautiful.
You've probably been by your mark, Dave Sutton, see, he's got like a little metal sign out there now. Or it's easy to miss going by. It's a, it's a large, a large farmhouse. Um, and it's got like a large barn.
Is it, uh, it's a one-sided, it's one-sided sign?
I.
It doesn't say if it's, it just says freestanding sign, sign.
Well, they are, they're.
Unilluminated freestanding.
That, I don't know, but, but most signs are two, two-sided anyway. And, and they don't have to be, it's not double the square footage. It's based on the, the outer perimeter of the sign itself.
Right, I'm, does, is there any indication where it's going to be located? Uh, is there any kind of a drawing or diagram? I mean, I know that's Jacquesier, isn't that the farm house there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So right here it says, um, six inches back from street line, sign will extend eight. Sign will extend eight. And then there's another section that says feet above grade. So I'm not really sure what I'm reading here. If this is.
Yeah, 24 feet, 6 inches from the street line.
Um, okay.
Oh, that's the face, no, that's the face of the building. I'm sorry.
The face of the building or hole is 44 feet, 6 inches back from street line. Okay. Yeah, I can't tell.
I was sort of, I, I don't know what's happening. And I'm just looking to see, that was the gentleman who was trying to get in before, but he hasn't come back. He got, he got disconnected or something.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We saw him, yeah, online here, yeah.
So, um.
Is that a freestanding sign, like an A-frame sign or something?
I think there's something up there now, too.
Yeah, he just has one of those little metal signs that goes on two prongs and you step on it, goes into the ground.
Yeah.
He's going to have it on his own, he's going to have it on his own property. Has a square footage, meets the code. footage meets the current code.
So that's sitting quite a ways back from the road, 44 and a half feet from the street line.
Well, I can't, Marcus, I can't tell if that is, if he's just putting it with the building.
Says the face of the building, Marcus, says the face of the building is 44 feet.
Yeah, and he's not putting it on, putting it on any building, then it's, yeah.
Freestanding.
Well, we're gonna have to make a provision that it has, it definitely has to be on his property, it cannot be in the town right away, right? That would be, that could be a condition of the, if it is approved or not. And I, when I, if I'll make a note of that to Art.
Oh, somebody's eating something. Yes, we can approve it positive with conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see, I'm, I'm just looking on Google Maps here, see if I can see where this thing's going.
There's not a lot of place to put it there anyways, it's pretty tight to the road.
Yeah, you gotta put it by the driveway, I assume, right, with that, where that other sign is?
I think so. That's where the other one is, it's by the driveway, it's right next to Officer Masai's house, I don't know if you know where that is. It's, it's actually the large, the last large farm barn before you turn on to Fred Jackson. Jacques sold it, and he built a newer home, and back in the field, back in the horse field.
Okay, so, all right, any other comments or questions from the board?
Okay, Marcus, you're up.
Are you, did you have any questions, Marcus?
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Well, let me just open it up to the, to the town officials and to the members of the audience if they wish to comment on it. Anyone?
I actually tried getting ahold of him, he has been texting me throughout the night, he had to deliver a load of bees, that's why he got disconnected.
Okay.
And I do recall, you're right, it is, it's not a huge driveway there, I know it was underneath the square footage that was required, he actually showed up at a meeting or two before they got discontinued, hoping it would get discussed earlier, of course, before all this happened. But unfortunately, he's not calling me back.
All right, well, it seems like it's a non-issue, so, okay, Marcus, go right ahead.
So Marcus Phelps, I make a motion to give a positive recommendation with conditions on the sign for 18 Claude Anderson Road, and the condition is that the freestanding sign be located outside the town right away.
Richard Ossinger, second.
All right, and just to back up for one second, so that the record's clear, that was Joe Diddy who was speaking before, I can't remember if you said your name, Joe, or not, but it was, it was talking. All right, so the motion has been made and seconded, we'll do a roll call, Marcus already, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Okay, all right, those are all set.
Marcus made a positive recommendation, who's seconded?
Dick did, right?
Yep. Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, so the, the only thing that I need, I wanted to just go over in routine business, or just to talk before we end, we could certainly talk about other things, but, you know, Alan gave the list before, and maybe we can run through the list of sort of pending matters that need a public hearing, but, you know, I wanted to get a sense of what people felt about doing those in this manner, you know, and if there are specific ones they wanted to do. I personally have a pretty big hesitation about doing public hearings, especially ones that involve a decent amount of paper, or plans, or whatever else that people, you know, in a, in a normal setting would be able to go to town hall and look at, would be able to look at at the meeting, it's just not as, it's somewhat difficult in this setting to do that, but ones that are going to have general applicability, like the bylaws, you know, ones that tend to have some, you know, tend to bring out people coming to the hearings, like the cell tower, I, I, I'm slightly more hesitant about doing those by Zoom at this point in time, especially if they're not going to be put on a town meeting. I, you know, not to say that we don't do them by Zoom, but, you know, let's just see how things play out in the next month or so, and then we can kind of figure out how those are going to get done, that's my personal feeling on those. The others, we have to run through them, but, you know, most of those seem pretty straightforward ones that could be done by Zoom, I don't expect there's going to be much of an audience for those, they're not, they're very distinct properties, you know, butters certainly write in, or Zoom in if they wanted to, so I have less, they're, they're just, you know, controversial is not the right word, but, you know, they're, they're less going to generate some input from the town, from what I can tell. So, you know, generally, before, before I ask Alan to go through sort of the list of them, because he did, he did go through it before, so you have a general sense in your mind, what is, what is your thought process about what we should do with these Zoom meetings and the public hearings?
Well, I think Rob Levesque's office has got their stuff together, because I observed a conservation commission meeting when they presented the Lakeview property there behind the cove, and they put the documents, the prints, right up on the screen, you could, they zoomed in on them if there were questions from the commission members. So I would think if Levesque is handling the Lakeview project and the Sunnyside Road, that we could certainly do a Zoom hearing on those.
Which one was the Lakeview again, I'm sorry?
It's the stormwater permit they're gonna
Right, okay, that's, that's fine, I wrote down stormwater permit and not Lakeview, so I just don't remember which one was which, okay.
And there, I think they finished up with conservation maybe last night, I know they were on the conservation agenda for the second time to look at that plan for the site.
Okay. Anybody else, any other members want to offer their thoughts about the calling the public hearings through Zoom?
I think you're right in regards to anything that may generate a lot of public input, that trying to manage all those public comments in a Zoom meeting might be more challenging.
Yeah, I agree.
Doug, is there a, any order out from the state regarding a combo meeting, like if we have members of the board that are immunocompromised, can they do Zoom meetings while we hold one in public?
It's been the position of the, the town so far that we've, we've, at least from the Board of Selectmen, we've been trying to encourage people to take advantage of the distance meetings, right? So originally, when this first started and the governor's order was in effect, there was a couple of selectmen that would meet at opposite ends of the land use conference room table with Carl in the middle, and it was roughly six feet between everybody. Then it got down to one selectman, and then we finally convinced them all to do the, the remote thing. So no public participation is allowed at town hall right now, the building is technically closed to the public, so you couldn't have a meeting there with, you know, one or two members and the public, defeats the purpose of this whole, the governor's order. My opinion, I think that, you know, conservation had that one meeting where they had the documents, I think it's actually, in some regards, better on Zoom, because you can present the documents and everybody can see it, I mean, you guys have been at planning board meetings, you guys have the plans on the table in front of you, and there might be 30 people in the audience, they can't see the plan, and even if you put it up on an easel, I, I know I can't see it from the back of the room, so you put them up on the screen and people can see it. And the way the, the Zoom works with, you know, with the moderator having control of the meeting, you recognize a person, you give them their time to speak, you unmute them, they can speak to the issue, and then, you, you know, you, you can either leave them, you know, open mic or not, but you, everyone will get their shot at it, everyone will get their, their, their chance to speak publicly on the issue, you know, and, and I think the way this is going, I don't know when we're going to go back to being able to have meetings of more than 10 people, and it's probably going to be a very gradual step in, you've got a long period that you'd have to advertise these things anyway, because you have to follow the open meeting law and the advertisements for special permits and everything else. You know, I totally respect what Chairman Dougherty's opinion on it, and, but I think you can, and I, I can talk offline as well, is, you know, one of the things you can do is, you can, you could advertise what you need to advertise, open the hearing, and then continue it until, if you think you see light at the end of the tunnel where you could meet it in public and do that, but at least you could get the ball rolling on what you need to get moving, because if you, if we're talking about waiting until June or July before you can start seeing that you might be able to meet, well, now you've got another two weeks plus to advertise and everything else, and so you're into August and September already for stuff to move, you know, the business of the town forward, so it, it's a, it's a delicate walk, I think we've been successful and we're getting better at this Zoom thing, as far as people being able to, to participate in the meetings, you know, you've got the technology available, you know, for people to use the Zoom app, Zoom this way, we can even broadcast direct to Channel 15, obviously that's only unidirectional, but you, we have that ability, and then, you know, for people that aren't comfortable using Zoom, period, they can call in and use, you know, a standard telephone to call into a meeting, in some regards, that's even, you know, it's, it's beneficial to people that can't get out easily and get to town hall to get to a meeting, so i, i, it's a double-edged sword, and I get it, but I think from what we've seen is, we need to, I, I would be looking to, to see what you could at least move the process along, you know, the, and, you know, a ground ball to try would be the, the scenic road tree, that needs to get done, it, it's a law, you have to have a joint hearing with the tree warden and the planning board, that one's a ground ball, right, and it's not in front of anyone's house, it's, it's not a big tree, it's not a historical tree, but it's on a scenic road, you gotta have the hearing, so do that one, see how it goes, and, you know, and maybe you advertise a couple of more of them, the cell tower's another good one, right? You know, if, if you don't like how it's going, you can continue the public hearing until such, you know, and just continue it until such a time as you feel that you're better positioned to finish the hearing on it, but at least start the process, you know, that Verizon, I know Verizon wants to get that tower going, we don't know what the opposition looks like, or if there is any opposition to it, or what, what it would be, but it does, you know, if they can prove that they're adding, you know, cellular coverage to town, you know, that's beneficial to the residents of the town, you know, and you weigh it against any opposition, then you, you know, you could act on the permit, if you don't like how it's going, as far as, you know, you don't feel that you're getting the, the amount of feedback that you want, because technologically it's not working, well, good, you continue the hearing until you can finally meet in person or whatever, but I think you, you know, you, we're gonna have to kind of feel this out, it's unprecedented as far as how all of it goes, but, you know, a lot of other towns and, and communities have been using this, and it's, it's, it's gonna be the way we're gonna be doing things for probably a while, because even after the governor lifts the order in May, there are going to be people that, you know, may not want to, or may not be able to still go in public until such a time as, as it's safe to, you know, really safe to do so. So, and, you know, you, we, they may still continue the order to allow, you know, remote participation in meetings, even if it's partial, you may have three of you at town hall, at four quorum, and two or four of you might be remote, so you're still going to have to go through the motions of, of whatever you're going to do, and, but I totally respect Chairman Dougherty's opinion regarding the public input, but so far from what we've seen is that you can get that public input, even on the Zoom platform.
Mike, what I, I, I lost you for some reason, and I had to reboot everything, so I, I have a feeling you're probably talking about the tree cutting, is Megan still there?
Yes.
She is. Oh, okay, but I, what I, what I was saying is, the one, the tree cutting on, on Fred Jackson Road, and, and there's only a couple, couple people involved, you know, the company within 300 feet of this tree, so I think public, I don't, I have a feeling won't care about the tree, it, it is posted already, so that would just be a matter of putting in the paper.
I think we got frozen, Alan. All right, so let me, if we can get Alan back, he can run through it, I just was jotting notes down, and I have, I have the property on College Highway, that's going back to an auto sales, I have that stormwater management permit, what is it, on Lakeview, is that what? I have the 90 Point Grove hearing, I have the Sunnyside hearing, I have the Verizon sale hearing, I have the bylaws, and I have the tree, is there anything else that was mentioned?
Hudson Drive, Hudson Drive gravel permit.
Oh, thank you, yep, I missed that, yep. All right, anything else that I missed?
What did you, you said something, White Grove Road, I don't know.
Yeah, I lost, for some reason it keeps bipping and out, so the tree cutting on Fred Jackson Road, there would be, there wouldn't be very many, much input other than the two residents. Hudson Drive, because it's a gravel permit, and it's a renewal, there hasn't been any problems with that, and again, there are no homes associated with that. And then the one on 797 College Highway, the used car sales, again, there, there aren't, it's not as if it's affecting the whole town, it would just be the guests facing across, and then the people at the American Inn. Again, I don't think we, I don't think in one meeting we can address all eight of them, but if we were, if we were to go through and do three or four of these, because our next meeting is May 26th, so we wouldn't be able to get on for that meeting anyway, because it has to be advertised twice in two different weeks, the butters have to be put out, it would might, it would be a stretch. But taking those three, because you're gonna, you're gonna have, I, I wouldn't anticipate there being a problem with selecting them, I am not speaking for the board, I just make the snowball, you guys.
No, I mean, if I, I look at them, and I say, well, first of all, Alan, what was the one on 90 Point Grove, that, at the, at the cove there?
Yeah, that, that was number nine, and number nine, Lakeview, but the, the big parcel is 90, oh, I just have, it's 90 Cove Grove Road, really, it doesn't have any, the reason 90 is, is listed is because the owner owns the cove and the two vacant lots, Mr. Anthony LaFlore.
Okay, all right.
Really, the, the seven and nine on Lakeview, where the two new homes are going through.
Okay.
Again, you are not going to, it's gone through, it's in conservation, I believe, it's going to probably be, maybe approved at the next conservation meeting, and then, of course, then we can look at it, and a lot of it's based on Randy's recommendations, and I've got some thrown in there that have been resolved, but again, that, that could be a fourth one in one night, if we feel, if you feel.
Well, I mean, I think, so, I, I say this, we don't need to do, to, to deal with the advertising, we can kick out the meeting another week, right, I mean, we can do it on June, whenever that is, and that'll give us time to
Oh, yes.
Do, do the advertising, we don't, there's no schedule that we, you know, given, given the way things are going, we can kind of move the schedule around a little bit, and I suspect we're gonna have to do potentially more meetings over the summer than we normally would, you know, and sort of clear out some of the You know, and sort of clear out some of the backlog.
But those four, those four would have the least impact from the town's respect.
So the four, the four are the tree?
The tree.
The gravel.
The used car sales.
Yep.
The gravel permit removal. And then the, uh, stormwater permit for Lakeview. The two vacant lots.
I, I would say do, do three. The tree, 797 College Highway and Hudson Drive. And then at another meeting have LeVek come in. LeVek would do both of that, both of those. The stormwater permit and the lots on Sunnyside Road.
Yes, those are all LeVek's.
So I, I would think maybe he would come in one time for those two projects.
Stormwater and, and Sunnyside are both LeVek?
Yeah, Sunnyside's LeVek and Lakeview is LeVek as well.
Sorry, Lakeview, I'm sorry, that's, yeah. Okay. All right, so that probably makes sense for him to, or whoever's coming from there to do it in one shot. Um, so why don't we, I mean, certainly let me know if there's any opposition to this or, or comments on it. But if we try to put, advertise and put College Highway, uh, the tree and Hudson Drive on for the next meeting. Uh, put the meeting on for
June the 9th. June 9th.
Oh, well, the 20, the 26th is three weeks. Can we not do it? Can we not get stuff out, out there?
Well, we can try, the only thing is, um, I would have to probably tutor Megan. I mean, we, we've already, these three have already been, uh, advertised, so it's just a matter of changing the dates.
Which three? Oh, the three they were putting on?
Yeah, they, they were already put on an agenda. But, but it's lapsed, you know, it was, it's lapsed by a month. And then we'd have to send out the, send out the, um,
Butters.
Butters with, I think, I think that's something that I could, I could help, rather than both of us be in the office. I think Megan, we have those already, Megan, it's just a matter of updating.
Yeah, I mean, I can go in tomorrow and send an ad to have it run and then do the butters and mail them. I mean,
The, the only thing that we have to do is Doug, maybe you can come in or, or Michael. On, when we do advertise in the paper, do we have to put in all of the electronic filing information in the, um, in the ad?
Yep. We have to have the Zoom link. So if you know the date and time, we can, but it would be, if they're all the same night, you, it's the same link. So once you have the date, you just let me know, I can show you or Mike, you can do it now. It's just schedule the meeting and then you get all the information you need for the paper.
Okay.
You don't have to publish all the phone numbers and everything else, just to save a little space in the ad. But you have to provide the Zoom link and a dial in number.
But you, you know, I know at the bottom, at the bottom of the page is all this, you know, per order of the governor and that whole paragraph.
You could, we, we might have to check on that. I don't know how that's, uh, I, I don't know that anyone's had to advertise yet. Cause normally it says it'll, the meeting will be held at 454 College Highway, yada, yada, yada. I don't know how it would have to read for a legal ad. You might have to actually get advice at Town Council on that.
When does it need to get out to the paper by Thursday? Friday?
I don't know what the due dates are, I don't remember what her
Typically it's three weeks, three weeks, three weeks before the meeting. It's sent, it's sent into the paper, doesn't, normally we used to send it in on a Thursday and it would be put in the, the following Tuesday. And then the, the next week, the following Tuesday before the meeting.
Right, so it probably needs to go by Thursday. I think that, that was my memory and my, and what Ruth did. Um, so let me ask this. And I just can't remember how the ads, but it's probably in the ad. Doug, is there, for some of these, how are, how are people able to look at documents in advance?
You can put them on your, um, you could actually put them on the planning board website. We can do that, or you publish them as part of your agenda, as attachments to your agenda.
Okay, who do I, who do we have to contact to get that done through the, to put it on the website?
Just put in the maple walnut and don't touch that.
Jim Middleton, I took care of that, Jim Middleton.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
The, uh, the Community Preservation Committee tomorrow night is having a Zoom public hearing. And in the Westfield News on, uh, April 29th, they put the announcement in. Uh, and there wasn't a lot of material related to getting into the conference for the Zoom meeting. And there was nothing about the governor's, uh, material in the ad. So if somebody, you know, wants to look at that one, it was done by Dennis Clark. And, uh, it's tomorrow night. And we'll, I'm gonna go on there because it's actually a public hearing.
Marcus, you want to do me a favor? Can you just, I don't know, take a picture of that or something? Love the actual newspaper ad, just so I can see exactly what's in there. I don't have the, I don't have the Westfield Evening News, so I don't. But I like to just see exactly what they said and then we can kind of play off of that.
I'm happy to.
But I, I mean, I think it's appropriate to at least have something in there that's, gives some mechanism by which someone could look at something before the meeting and not have to just show up and look at stuff cold at the meeting. Uh, because that's always, I think, been in there that you can, you know, it's available, the application's available at Town Hall, um, you know, in advance of the meeting.
The Hudson, the Hudson Drive one, you know, those are two 24 by 36 inch full copies. The, the tree cutting is at eight and a half by 11, so that's no problem. The 79 College Highway, I, I want to say it's legal size.
I mean, the, the Huts, the, the stuff at Hudson, I mean, I'd be, I'd be surprised if they don't have that electronically, right? That they could shoot that over to you.
Right, I can check that, that is a, um,
They're big enough. Are they using LeVek over there?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's okay, I mean, he, he can, he can, um, come in by remote also if there's any questions. I don't think there's any, there would be too many questions. You know, it's a gra, it's a gravel permit. They're staying, they're staying 10 feet above the minimum groundwater.
Did someone from LeVek show up in the past? I don't remember someone from LeVek ever showing up in the past either. It's just been the guys from over there, right?
Yeah, and that one there.
When Lane did it.
One, one time, John Goddard did.
Did he? Okay.
The last time he didn't, and so I kind of present, I kind of presented it. Cause we, we're required to go out and physically look at the premises to make sure they are in, um, compliance with their existing permit.
Right. Okay.
And they, they're, you know, it's, it's come up and I told them that they would not be penalized because of the, the conditions that are going on with the virus, you know, for a deadline. You know, the two years is coming, I mean, they're, it's gonna be done within a month.
But I don't think it, I, I, uh, well.
Well, the governor's allowed everyone to have extensions on it anyway.
Yeah, that's what I, I'd have to look at the order. Um, I spend more time looking at the SJC orders than the governor's orders. But there, I think there's an order out there that talks about extending deadlines, uh, generally.
Yes.
Everything, everything was frozen as of 310. All blocks were stopped on, uh, March 10th. So if there was anything running at that time, it stopped on March 10th and it starts again. I think it's 40 days after he backed his order or something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's good, Marcus.
All right. All right, so I, um,
So the thing is, if you want to, if you want to try for those three meetings, if I can get the ID number or whatever. And then I can kind of help Megan, uh, prepare that.
Yeah, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to Doug and just make sure I fully understand getting the, generating the stuff and what we have to do and make sure I get it right. But I'll get that over to you guys. I'll take a look at Marcus's stuff and see if there's anything, you know, we should add to it. You know, to the notice and then we'll go from there. But I should be around, I should have a little time tomorrow.
Okay.
To do that.
Hey, Mike, Hope Trembley from the Westfield News is on the line as well. If you, if she, if you wanted to recognize her, she might be able to help you out.
Oh.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to let you know, you can go onto thewestfieldnews.com for free. And up on the upper left corner, there's like little bars, three little bars. And when you click on it, you can see an E addition. And then you can use it like a flipbook and you can see the legals, you can see every page.
Oh, perfect, okay.
And this was posted, this was posted in the paper April 29th.
Okay, they do roll off after a few days, so that particular one may not be there, but you can see how the legals are done. And there's contact info for who to talk to about legals.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mike, what I can do is I can call Dennis and have him, um, if he has it, see, what happens, conservation has it pretty good because they make the applicant put the, everything in the newspaper. And the applicant pays it directly out of their pocket for the ad. Where we, we pay for it, you know, we charge $175 and it costs $175. But if it goes larger, we have to pay more. And that's why I was questioning the, uh, the paragraph, which would probably take us over that amount.
Who do we talk to about, uh, that issue? We should, we should get that deal as well. That would be, um, all right. Yeah, I'm just looking, I'm not seeing one, at least in the last paper. But we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that, we'll play around with it tomorrow and get it published for Thursday or sent over for Thursday.
There it is, Mike, right here, see it? Can you see it, Mike?
All right. Okay, so, um, the, um, you know, the only other thing that popped to mind, uh, was, um, leasing out that, uh, those slips. Uh, has anything come to fruition on that, Alan?
I, I've, you know, I've, I told, I've talked to the attorney how, countlessly, he wants, she wants to rent out the slips. And, and when she, when she came, when Jen came to us, she didn't have a plan prepared. Plus her property is a pre-existing non-conforming. Uh, for various reasons, the side yards. But the biggest thing is there's not enough parking. She only has 20, my memory recalls, there's only 24 parking spaces. And I think she needed something like 60. But it's pre-existing non-conforming. And we, we had told them that you need to come up with an additional 10 spots. She implied that the gentleman right across the street from her was gonna, she was gonna buy the land. And as long as the parking lot is within 200 feet of the property, that would be fine. She, like, where she kind of upset that neighbor and he said, no, we're not over my dead body, would I do anything? So, um, then she illegally started parking cars at the Cove. And people were coming, coming from Cove, which is well in excess of 390 feet. And Point Grove Road is a busy road. Uh, there's no proper lighting, there's no, there's no pedestrian crossing. And the, I talked to the police chief and he didn't like that. It was the end of the season. But I tried bringing that back up again. I said, anything you're gonna do on your property, you have to come in for a special permit. And you would have to come in for a site plan. And that would not be approved because it doesn't meet any of our criteria for the, you know, from our rules and regulations.
I mean, basically nothing has changed since last she was here.
Well, yesterday, yesterday the attorney called and he said, and we use Nora's restaurant. And I told him, that's, that's in excess of 200 feet again. And again, Nora's is a pre-existing non-conforming. They don't have enough parking to support their business, but it's pre-existing. And she, I don't know if you're familiar, there's a big rock wall when you look at Nora's from, um, the old Louis B's. She was parking cars illegally along that toe of that slope. And that was on private property. And the gentleman, are you still there? Hello?
Yep, Alan, we can hear you.
Okay, I can't see you though. And, and again, I had, I had given her attorney and her a complete package of rules, regulations, I did a site plans on the whole surrounding area. And, um, she's of course saying, well, if you, if we only let her do it for a little bit, when the, when the restaurant's open, she'll deny it. But quite honestly, her track record isn't very good. And I know that's going to be a very difficult thing to do. Not being a hard guy, I'm just being practical. You know, once burnt, once learned. And, um, I told him again, anything that has, anything that's done associated with that has to be a special permit and a site plan. And I, I kind of recommended that I wouldn't, I hate to see people spend money on something that won't be approved.
Mike, did you, did you use a name? Who is, who is this? Is this the walk?
Yeah, her name, the owner is Jen Nusko.
Okay. So you have it on the record that that's who we're talking about.
Correct. I was just trying to, I don't want to, but she owns both of them. She's leasing out to a gentleman for the walk. And, and since I've been dealing with her, you know, I made it aware of her, her potential, her potential people who were interested in buying it, you know, of the conditions. And it's, you know, it's like 10 pounds in a five pound sack. And I give any leverage because the lever is gonna come back and hit us in the backside. Because that, that road is heavily traveled and the police chief is reluctant with that also.
And I, I mean, my memory from when she was here, I don't know how many years ago it was, but, I mean, it was the same thing. She proposed to Nora's and, and
And that's when she, she threw the papers at you and said she's gonna talk to her friend Charlie.
Yeah.
And you said, send me condolences to Charlie, cause you went to school with him or something like that.
Um, so, I, I mean, it, nothing has changed. I mean, and the other thing too is my memory, and this even meant, this may have even been why she came in front of us, is that she was improperly renting out slips, right? I mean, she was so the parking, you got the parking issue as well, but the slip issue was
Yes.
Going on too. So I, all right, I, but that's, they haven't submitted anything to get on any kind of meeting, uh, any application or anything like that.
Nope, and I was talking, I talked to their attorney Caruso and I explained everything to him. And he's saying he know, he knows, but again, he has to ask because his client is.
Okay.
I know, I know, um, you know, the police, the police chief, he's also the dock master. He's a hardware master. So he's aware of it and at one of the meetings for the Congammon Lakes, when she was leasing, she leased out some. He brought it up to her attention and she says, oh no, those are just friends. I will not ever be leasing anything off those docks.
Right. Okay. All right, um, any other issues to bring up? Yes, Marcus.
I noticed Bill Crawford is on the
Thank you, yep.
But he's muted, so I don't know if we want to let him know.
I'm here, I'm just working a little bit.
So Bill, we had, um, we went through the sign application. And the structure under the bylaw is the planning board gives a positive recommendation, a negative recommendation, or positive with conditions. What we voted on and gave you was a positive with the condition and the only condition being that the sign can't be being that the sign can't be located in the town right away.
Yeah, it's about 40 feet back there. The one side sign kind of looks facing slightly down the driveway a little bit, so you can see it when you drive by. But yeah, very good, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
You, too. Anybody else have anything?
Mike, one good question. What's going on with the excavation behind the notch? So a lot of excavation going on back there. Do you know anything about it?
Yep, they, if I invited Mike, but in, he did come before the, they did come before the town, oh, a year and a half years ago, and it was deemed that's an agricultural use. What he did is, he had, he had three tiers of fields for growing his tobacco, and what he wanted to do is, he wanted to make one big flat field that was more manageable. Sure. So there is. And under the, I want to, I can't remember, I don't think it was you, Michael, did you remember dealing with that?
I, we went by it the other day, and my wife asked me about it, and I, it just didn't, it didn't hop to mind. I couldn't remember why.
I think it came, maybe it was under Ross, and because he is a farm, and he is, he does have a plan on file, and again, it's a Rob LeVek, they were more concerned with the flooding, and there's a stream that goes through there. So they, it was deemed at that meeting that it's an agricultural use, and the town didn't have any leverage on it. The only leverage we've been having on him is having him constantly refresh his tracking pad. And Art's been sending, Art's been sending him letters on that, because it does get washed out into the road. And, but they've been receptive, and they go, they fix it again. You know, that's basically what they were doing, was taking it out of, sort of out of our hands.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Logging and agricultural have a lot of exemptions.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So it's the Arnold, it's the Arnold Farm, and they want to make it one usable flat field, rather than, it was tiered, like, it was very difficult for them to, to work as a farm.
Joe, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mike, I believe they're done. My understanding is they're now capping that back. I believe the loans that are coming out of there are pretty close to being done, and they're bringing the loom back in and making it back to farm. So I think that operation is almost done, done.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, do we have the Dave Sutton honorary motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, or, I guess we even have to do a roll call on this, just to make sure that everybody's doing it. So I'll do Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Olson, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave Spina, I.